Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this afternoon Pierce County Council meeting and committee of the whole. It is Thursday, October 5th, 2023. The time is 1:32 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Excused.
Councilmember Krueger.
Yes.
Councilmember Denson.
Excused.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Excused.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have four members present.
We have four members present and a quorum. Councilmember Campbell is here. We have five members present and a quorum. Item number three is approval of our agenda. We have two budget presentations this afternoon, the Superior Court biennial budget presentation, followed by the juvenile court biennial budget presentation, and then followed by a council member discussion, question, comments, and further discussion. Is there any objection to our agenda as presented? Not seeing any. Our agenda will stand approved. I just want to let members know for members' information, our sheriff's department conversation did go longer. All of us have several more conversations and discussion we would like to have with the sheriff's department about their budget proposal. And our staff did quickly meet with sheriff's department staff, and we have arranged for them to be with us again next Thursday. So they'll be with us after the prosecutor session on Thursday, and we'll be able to spend a bit more time with them, getting all of our questions answered and having more dialogue with them. So thank you to our budget staff for arranging that quickly. In the meantime, if there are questions, like always, if there are, in the meantime, questions to tee up on the sheriff's department, the budgets we're talking about today, public safety related, please do get them to Mr. Bridges, and that will only help us make sure we have an informed dialogue if that's appropriate. Okay. We are at item four, Superior Court 2024-2025 budget. Mr. Bookie to help me introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair Mello. The Superior Court is here this afternoon, followed by the juvenile court. And in the budget book, the Superior Court is under the Legal Judicial tab, and it begins on page, it's section eight, page 23. And they also provided a PowerPoint, and there will be nothing for them in the decision packet, although there is, I believe, one or there's three or four items for the juvenile court in the decision packet.
Thank you. I'd like to invite up presiding Judge Ashcraft from our Superior Court. Judge Ashcraft, welcome. Thank you for making time to be with us today.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mello, and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you here today. My name is Tim Ashcraft. I am the presiding judge for Pierce County Superior Court, here to talk to you today about our presentation for the next biennial budget. And again, I do recognize there was a PowerPoint that was provided. Is that going to be up on the screen? Okay. All right. Thank you.
It'll be loaded here real shortly.
Okay. So I guess as an overview, we can talk about the fact that in the budget process that was presented to us from the executive, we were asked to cut 4% from our budget, and that resulted in about a $2 million cut over the biennium, about $920,000 in the first year, about $980,000 in the second year. So we accomplished that task, and that was presented back to the executive. The executive came back to us and reinstated some of that money. Specifically, as part of that 4%, we had cut some personnel positions, and we had also made a lot of operational cuts and reductions to our positions, to our budget. When the executive came back, the three positions that we had cut, he restored, and restored some of the money from the operational cuts as well. And I'm going to talk more about that as I go, about our kind of reaction and our position on some of these proposed restorations from the executive and what our proposal is, is to how this goes forward. So again, again, thank you again for the time. If you can have the next slide, please. So again, I know this is really just the council's budget priorities that we're just presenting as far as the presentation. Go forward, please. Thank you. This is the organizational chart for Pierce County Superior Court. Obviously, it goes into several different levels here. I can certainly answer any questions, but that's just informational for you, just to show how that we are organized. If I could have the next slide, please. So we have broken this down really into these three kind of core areas of our judicial services. That is our judges and the judges' staffs, our commissioners. We have 10 commissioners in addition to our 23 judges and their staffs. And then we have our administrative services that service all of Superior Court, 35 staff members there. So that's just kind of how we just divided our core functions here. Again, notice that on the judicial side, we have the 21 judicial officers that are always here in the CCB, and then we have two judges as well as two commissioners that are out at Raymond Hall. I know you're getting that presentation separately after mine. So that's just the basic way in which we've divided up our core functions here. Next slide, please. This chart just shows you again as far as our personnel, how we're just divided by function. Again, you can see 36% in the criminal area, 14% in admin, and so on. I will point out that the 7% Raymond Hall is just kind of our Superior Court portion of Raymond Hall. That's separate from the Raymond Hall budget that you're going to see in the second presentation here today. So with a total FTEs, you can see of 114. And I will say just on that number, you know, we have compared ourselves to other courts in Washington State, and it's our belief that we're a very lean and efficient court system here, and that we don't have a lot of fluff, if you will, or a lot of extra bodies or anything like that. And it's one reason why when we had the 4%, it was somewhat difficult for us, because again, we're not a programmatic-based budget. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit, but 114 total FTEs. Next slide, please. So if we look at the critical needs and challenges facing Superior Court, on the one side, we have the Blake resentencing, and I know you've heard about this before. Because of the Supreme Court's decision in Blake, that caused thousands of cases that needed to be resentenced. Now, the good news is that most of those have been done, or a lot of those have been done. And big thanks to Judge Shorenson, our previous presiding judge, who did a lot of work on that, along with the prosecutor's office and DAC, to get a lot of those done. So a lot of those have been taken care of at this point. Now, we do have some non-Blake resentencing issues that we're still dealing with and will continue to deal with going forward, which includes, again, some of the Houston Sconyers type of resentencing and other issues. But I'll just say that whenever we get a court decision that requires the resentencing, again, that's always, you know, additional work over and above what we're typically doing on our day-to-day basis. We are still dealing with the backlog from COVID on the criminal and the civil side. You know, before COVID, our criminal pendings were at around 1,500, give or take. Our criminal pendings now are at about 2,000, give or take. So you can still see, we're still dealing with that issue. We still have some Class A felony backlogs, again, that we're trying to get through. And I'll say that everyone's working their best and their hardest to get through this backlog. Part of the issue that we're also facing that's really not directly related to COVID is just in other areas of government as well. You're having a lot of retirements, you know, a lot just due to age, and some maybe people retired a little bit early because of COVID in some instances. But I know that our prosecutor's office and DAC are both, you know, have both had a lot of turnover in the last couple of years, and so we have a lot of newer people, sometimes people who are not as experienced and that, you know, so the people that are handling the Class A felonies, there's not as many of them to go around, but we're all working through it as well as we can. Again, lots of civil cases that are complex that we're still trying to get through our backlog as well. And then on the process improvement, we have the LINK system and Echo. Again, always looking to improve those systems. We're very proud of the LINK system here in Pierce County. It's a system that only we use. You know, when parts of the state have gone to other systems, we've been very protective of LINKs because we feel it's a superior system. So that's just our belief, but it always can be using to be updated and improved as we go. And data analysis, again, you know, with all of the things that we do, we're always looking for what are the trends, what can we be doing better? And that's, I want to talk a little bit about data analysis a little bit later, but just the idea of constantly looking at the things that we're doing and how to improve. Next slide, please. So what are our priorities here? We have court technology, the nice digital evidence system. Again, it's not an acronym. I've joked a little bit about when you see the demo, you just kind of say, oh, that's nice. And so it's an electronic system for dealing with evidence, and it's going to be, we're rolling it out now in test phases. It's something the Court of Appeals definitely wants us to do. It's really just the next phase here of technology of having, you know, all of our evidence being presented digitally, where the attorneys or the pro se litigants scan in their exhibits, and then it's easy to transfer back and forth between parties, between us and the Court of Appeals. It's just a nice system, but, you know, it's new, and it's going to take some getting through the bugs and also getting people used to it. You know, two years ago, none of us knew what Zoom was, and we all got used to it. And just like that, it's going to take some getting used to, but ultimately, it's going to be a good thing. On the Justice Center, of course, you know, we talked for several years about ultimately, you know, having a new Justice Center. That's not really part of today's presentation, but at some point in the future, obviously, we have the issues going on as far as with the 1501 Market Street building, which also means there are going to be some more room for Superior Court here in dealing with those issues going forward. Parking is always an issue for us, for staff and jurors, as far as making sure there's both adequate and safe parking. Again, the dealing with, the jurors are paid $10 a day. That doesn't even cover cost of parking for them, so that's something that's always an issue for us. And then the staffing concerns. Again, with all this new technology, it's wonderful, but part of technology is technology going wrong and needing to be fixed and attended to. So there's always an issue about staffing with our tech side. Next slide, please. All right. And so we didn't have any specific budget package items, but I will come back to one other issue here in a little bit. If I can have the next slide, please. On the proposed FTA changes, it says NA, but I do want to address one issue, and this was from what came back from the executive. I mentioned that in our proposed budget, we cut three different positions, and the executive restored those three positions to us. And I did want to say that our proposal back to the council is that we would accept two of those three, but we're still asking to cut one of those positions. And that is our, we currently have two staff GAL positions, guardian ad litem positions on our budget. We've just seen a trend over the last few years of, just from a workload point of view, not being able to really justify the second GAL position just from workload. And so while we're happy to reinstate two of those positions that the executive talked about, we would like to still have that second GAL position cut just because of workload, a lack of workload for that second person. I'm sorry. Okay. And use that money, though, for operational, that we're, instead of having the operational cuts that we have, use that money towards our operational cuts. So over the biennium, that money saved on that one position would be about $292,000, and it would help us, again, to offset some of the operational cuts that we do have. So that is our proposal to the council, is that, again, that we reinstate two of those positions that the exec reinstated to us, but that third position, again, that one staff GAL position, that we continue to cut that position, but use that money for operational side. Because we believe through our executive committee that we've discussed this and our judges have discussed it, that that would help serve the community better as a whole. So that would still leave us with about $174,000 in operational cuts. So if the council allowed us to, again, use that money from that position and help offset some of our operational cuts, we'd still be about $174,000 short. We accept that as part of the budget cuts that have been asked of us. But if the question ever became up, what would make us whole as far as our budget, it would be, again, to allow us to use that one position, and then we, $174,000 more than that would get us to be whole if that question was asked. But again, we understand that budget cuts may be necessary. So that's the proposal we have. That's a little bit different than what the exec came back with after our proposed budget. I can certainly answer any questions on that if there are any questions related to that difference. I will say that on that issue, it's really important to the Superior Court that whatever budget that we have, that we have the flexibility to use that money and to adjust that money as we see fit. As a separate branch of government, one of the things we feel strongly about is that we know what our needs are, we know where the areas we can cut most effectively and most efficiently. And so whatever that money is, we accept that and we're grateful for that, but we do want to have the flexibility to move that money around and reallocate as needs arise so that we can best serve the community. Next slide, please.
I'll ask you to pause there.
Sure.
Judge Ashcraft, and I'll invite questions on anything we've heard so far. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell. I got my.
Thank you. Thank you for the coming, presenting to us. I have presented here for me the, a letter where I think you sent up.
Yes.
These were the changes you were just discussing, I believe.
Yes.
With the guardian ad litem. I see a reduction in the interpreter's budget.
Right.
Of, if I'm reading this correctly, $50,000 per year. Why would we be looking at reducing the interpreter budget?
Right. So again, just to be clear, that was what we had proposed to the executive as part of our 4% cuts. And it is our proposal to take that GAL money to help offset those cuts. Remember that on the interpreter budget, there's partly, it's partly our budget, and it's partly money we do get reimbursed from the state on some of that money. Honestly, it's a hard time for us to be cutting interpreter budgets because our interpreter needs continue to grow. And to be quite candid, I mean, there's, with fewer interpreters, we're in constant competition with other counties about trying to get interpreters and then also being able to pay competitive wages to those interpreters. So Councilmember Campbell, really, again, that was part of our, we had to come up with 4% somewhere, and that was just a partial cut to that. And that's another reason why with the money what we're asking to cut that one GAL position and use that money to help with that, and that would fully reinstate our interpreter budget back up to 100% of what we're asking for. So again, that was not, you know, none of these cuts were easy for us, but we did make that suggested cut, but we are hopeful that we can get that back up to full amount if we can do the proposal as we've presented to you.
Okay. So if I'm, I think perhaps I wasn't reading this correctly then. So you're proposing the one GAL cut, that'd be the 292.4.
Right.
And if you make that cut, these are all the funding below it that you would return.
Correct.
In lieu of it.
Right, exactly. So that $292,000, that's, we're showing you how we would use that money, would be to offset the cuts that we previously made in our original budget that we sent to the county executive. And as you can see, when it says that 174.6, that's just telling you that after we reinstate the 292, if we're allowed to do that, our total operational cuts that would still be $174,000, which is why I mentioned that if the question came up, how would you be made totally whole, that would be the additional money that would be needed, would be the 174, that would reinstate all of the operational cuts that we've made. So I didn't include those all in that letter, but that's in some of the prior materials that you've received.
Okay. I think that's all for now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens?
I got it now. I figured it out between his question and reading the letter.
Okay.
We're good. Thank you.
Judge, coming up to something you brought up towards the beginning that you brought to our attention, seems minor, but not minor to getting a diverse jury pool and getting jurors to show up. And you noted parking in your department priorities for staff and jurors. Is it not, is it not an allowable expense for some reason to pay for juror parking?
So there are, what happens is, there's a number of park, there's parking lots that we have for jurors, but it's not, it doesn't, it's not enough to satisfy all the jurors that may come in on a given day. So if jurors get here early enough, right, and there is that lot that we have just on the other side of Yakima that they can park in, but when that gets full, then they're faced with either parking on the street or parking in a lot. So some jurors do have parking free because of that, but others, others do not.
First come, first served, yeah.
Yeah.
About how many?
Yeah.
Is it just during peak times, like when we have a high-profile trial? Is it often? Can you give us a sense? If you can come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Council Chair Chris Gaddis, Pierce County Superior Court Administrator. It is quite often. There are weeks on Mondays and Tuesdays where we could have upwards of 400 jurors in the building, and we have parking capacity around 170 on a daily basis. So it is a very large number that can be without available parking in a lot that's controlled by Pierce County. There are street parking options, as Judge mentioned, but those are harder and harder. If you've ever tried to find street parking that wasn't pay, you do have to park further and further away from the county city building.
And I, we're not going to solve the problem right now, but a few more moments on it. The, imagine you've worked with facilities. I gotta believe the gold lot, the other lots that maybe were filled with staff now that more people are working remotely. Are these other lots, we have lots of surface lots that we own in walking distance of this building.
Right. Facilities is working on this as hard as they can. I do want to give them total credit. They're a very good partner in this option, or looking for options with us. But sometimes you just, you can't hit that capacity. And it is possible, maybe when the 1501 Market Street opens up, that might make significant improvements. I think our goal in putting that on our PowerPoint presentation was to just bring it to light, make sure that it stays in the forefront of everybody's mind. When the 1501 Market Street is going up, can we make sure that the juror parking issue is looked at? Even our staff don't have parking. It's not, it's a percentage, I think somewhere around 50% to 60% have parking. Yeah. It's not all of our staff have parking, and that goes, that's across the board. Anybody in the county city building doesn't have full parking.
Right. We do provide a bus pass to jurors. It's not an option for everybody, but that is an option for some if they have transit access near their residence. While we're on the topic, and before we ask you to go on to your diversity, equity, and inclusion slides, Judge, we noted parking is one obstacle for jurors. Do you have a sense of how much childcare or elder care availability, or childcare or elder care costs are to jurors showing up or saying, I can stick out this trial?
Sure. Go ahead. So we don't have a specific number on how many of our jurors in particular have childcare issues and whether or not it keeps them from participating in jury service. There is a study out that was done in conjunction with Seattle University and the Minority and Justice Commission that looked at jury data statewide using jury surveys, and that is specifically addressed in there. It's, I want to make sure that that number is in there. I'll review that and get back to you, but the, in the recent legislation that came out this year, there's a request that, I believe, two jurisdictions in Washington State actually conduct a review of what it would take to open up child daycare services to potential jurors and how we can make those programs successful. I believe Spokane County is one of them and maybe the city of Seattle, but I can look into that.
Please do follow up.
Yep.
A number of us are very interested in that topic.
And can I just say, this is not really a budget issue, but I do want to really just say how much I appreciate Pierce County jurors, because that is an issue for a lot of folks, whether it's childcare or elder care. And I am continually impressed of how many people that, you know, in the cases that I preside over have made other arrangements that, you know, and some people just can't, and that's understandable. But I'm always impressed at how many people come and they, they've got issues, but they've made arrangements with a friend or a family member or something to take care of their issues and how seriously they take jury service. I just want to say that I'm just very impressed with Pierce County jurors. Any other questions before I move on?
I'm sure there'll be more questions at the end of your presentation, Judge.
Sure. All right. Can I have the next slide, please? Next slide, please. All right. So on the DEI issues, again, I don't know that it's specific to the budgeting process. You can see there that we've, we've talked about, we've talked a little bit about juries' accessibility. I will say that, you know, with the, you know, all the things we learned coming out of COVID, and one of those things being Zoom and remote proceedings, and so we still have, we still have that as an option when it's needed. So we have returned primarily to in-person proceedings, although our commissioners are doing still a lot of their proceedings remotely. But for Superior Court, we're doing most of our proceedings in person, but we always have the remote option as needed. And I will say that that's also included for witnesses, right? So even you could have an in-person trial, but you've got a witness who, for whatever reason, needs to appear remotely, and that's frequently an option for us. So I do want to make sure that that's known as well. Also, just again, maybe not specifically budget, but we've just recently adopted our first standing DEI committee within Superior Court. We did have an ad hoc committee on that, and our executive committee just recently, within the last several months, voted to make that a standing committee, and that has just been formed with Judge Clarence Henderson, who's currently serving out at Raymond Hall, as the first chair of that committee that is now a standing existing committee that will be existing going forward. So next slide, please.
That is great to hear.
So on, again, the capital projects, really, we mentioned earlier the 1501 Market Street, and really, again, not maybe exactly a budget issue here, but again, we are, we are working with facilities and making sure that as that transition occurs and people are moving out of 1501, there is going to be additional space for Superior Court, and we know that there are going to be some monies available for that, though limited. But it's our desire to just, again, work with, work with facilities and make sure that we're getting, you know, a fair portion of that to do the tenant improvements that we need to expand the footprint of Superior Court within this building. Next slide, please. So this is what we kind of, getting back to the beginning here, again, the budget reductions, and this goes back to, again, the 4% that we were asked to reduce by, by the executive at the, at the beginning of the year that we took care of. And again, and now, again, we're getting some of that money back, and it's just a matter of how we get to use that money. Again, we've talked about that already. I don't need to go through that again. Next slide, please. And again, this just is some equipment that we're still, have a remaining balance on that we're still looking to complete. But there was a mention here about data drops and power outlets. I will just say this, that with all of the technology that we're adding, whether it's been all the COVID-related issues, the nice digital evidence, is that technology is great, but it requires more infrastructure to do that. And again, you see the data drops and power outlets, you know, the building is a bit on the older side, and so making sure that we get those types of issues to help our technology is important to us going, going forward. Next slide, please. And that's really the existing presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there other questions by members? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. One is in regards to the drug court changes or just understanding what's happening with drug court, kind of as an update. If you could kind of share, and this may go to Mr. Gaddis, or he may follow up with me later, but just kind of wanted to see where that was with Blake changing.
Right. And certainly, Mr. Gaddis can have additional information, but I think as we've reported before, you know, we did have a decrease in some of our therapeutic courts during COVID, and those numbers are coming back up. I think in response to your question, we're currently at 85 in felony drug court and 35 in the mental health court. Again, still working with the prosecutor's office on trying to get those, those numbers up. I think as we've talked about in prior presentations, you know, the, as, from, from the court's point of view, we can't, we're not the ones that introduce people into the program, right? That comes from the prosecutor's office. We do try to, again, remind the prosecutor and DAC of that these programs are available. And I think as we've talked in prior presentations, you know, it's not just, it's not just drug crimes that take people into drug court, and that was the issue about with Blake, was how does Blake affect our therapeutic courts? And that really, more often than not, it's the, again, it's the stolen vehicle, it's the property crimes in general that frequently have either a drug or mental health or both. health or both component to them. And so that's really up to, again, the prosecutor's office to be kind of reviewing those cases and for the DAC to be suggesting that. I will tell you that, you know, with my current role as presiding, I frequently am filling in, in our CDPJ, our Criminal Division Presiding Court, and, you know, that's kind of the gatekeeper for all the criminal cases. And, and frequently what comes up, just happened yesterday when I was there, is, you know, we're, we might be delaying a case because we're trying to get someone into drug court or someone into mental health court. So we are putting off a trial date because we're, that, that process is in place, where we're doing a drug screening, we're doing, looking for, are there, is there a bed available on the mental health side? So I will just tell you that that's actively going on, where we're trying to, again, look to divert appropriate people, and when I say appropriate people, based on the charges that they have and based on the conditions that they are, are facing, bring people into that, that court system. And certainly, again, I can bring up Mr. Gaddis if there's additional questions on that.
No, that, that's very helpful. I just, when I see things, I just wanted to understand. It's something I'm pretty passionate about, and I think it's an effective program, and just want to continue to understand how we're using it. And then my second question is around the COVID backlog and just, I'm wondering with workload, have you kind of like paced this out, figure out, like if we said, like where are you? When, when would you, when do you think we're going to be done with the COVID backlog? Let me just phrase it that way.
Right. I, I wish I could give you-
It's an end in sight.
I, I don't think there's an end in, in the immediate, you know, reasonable future. It really is, and I'm not trying to dodge your question, it's just, it's a tough, it's a tough issue because, you know, sometimes you'll hear the phrase that, like on the criminal side, that we're not going to try our way out of the COVID backlog, meaning that, you know, even with all the courtrooms that we have, you know, there's only a, a couple of hundred trials a year, really, right? So it really comes down to, you know, getting these cases resolved through plea agreements or sometimes dismissals or, or therapeutic courts, whatever it may be. I will tell you that part of the issue that we face is sometimes that certain people have picked up charges maybe in multiple counties. And, you know, I know what happens is, because I, I, you know, deal with these cases where they're trying to do these global resolutions, and that just takes time because a person, again, may have charges in three counties, say, and the prosecutors in each of those counties are trying to work together with the attorneys and trying to say, okay, which county is this going to get resolved in and, and how are we going to do this? Obviously, that just takes coordination. And so I don't know what other counties' backlogs are, but it, in that sense, it does have an effect on Pierce because, again, of trying to, to integrate all of these, these types of things. I will also say that, again, as I mentioned earlier, that some of the issue does revolve around just personnel and, and people that have retired and new people that are coming on. I know anecdotally, talking to the prosecutor's office and to DAC, that they're bringing on new people, you know, which causes, of course, th- those people need to get trained and need to get experience, right? And so it's, I mentioned earlier, the, the people that are doing the Class A felonies for both the prosecutor's office and DAC, they're working pretty hard and, you know, doing back-to-back-to-back trials and just, you know, sometimes I'll be, when I'm in CDPJ filling in, I'll ask, why are we, why are we setting this trial out three months, four months? And they'll say, sorry, Judge, both of us have trials booked, you know, until that time. And so it's just, it's a, it's really a lot of moving parts, right? So I, I'd love to be able to say, next year or the year after, we're going to be through it. I just, I couldn't say that with any confidence, and to be honest with you.
Well, and the bubble just kind of keeps moving is what's happening.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Judge, did I hear correctly your response to Councilmember Hitchens? Roughly speaking, we have felony drug court, we have felony mental health court-
Right.
-in place in Superior Court. About 25 individuals currently in felony drug court?
No, I think I said 80, 85. Let me pull up my number.
Eighty-five, I misheard.
Yeah.
About 85, not trying to ping you to an exact number.
Sure.
About 85 and about 35?
In mental health court.
In mental health court.
Yes.
The transfer in that we see in the budget, the transfer in to Superior Court of 998,500, that's a transfer in from the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund. Is that correct? Okay, I'm seeing a nod from our staff that, and that was in district, that those were funds that were in district court? No. Can you explain that to us?
Well, I, I won't say no, but I, I think more importantly, the Superior Court, you know, this, the current biennial, did not receive any money from Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund. It's now proposed for $998,500 for therapeutic courts. So I, I guess it covered both those courts that you're, you're discussing right now. The, the district court item was reduced by a little over $800,000 in the current, and the proposal is to reduce their amount from $1,726 to $889,880.
Okay. So staying focused on the Superior Court, the transfer in here is from the Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund, transferred in to Superior Court. Presumably Superior Court would use these dollars to run the felony drug court and felony mental health court. Does it pay for 100% of the cost of felony drug court and mental health court?
Yes.
So I'm going to be looking back at my staff here in a couple times, but it does not cover the judicial officer and staff for both of those, those courts, and-
It does or does not?
Does not pay for the judge and the staff. What it, what it would do in this current iteration would, the portions of that would go to fund PCA, the Pierce County Alliance. The portion that was currently in our budget but was reduced because we were trying to hit the 4% number, that then adds funding to cover the PCA funding that was out of our budget. It also covers one staff member. We have a, a, a Superior Court supervisor that's in charge of therapeutic courts. She has one staff person who manages mental, felony mental health court side of things. And so there's one other, what, what's the other cost that it covers? That was it, just the PCA and, and PAM? Okay.
And the, and the Pierce County Alliance provides services such as?
Oh, Dia, do you want to come up here and give a list, or?
The, the-
It's just-
Evaluation and treatment for the individual to, to go through their restoration.
Right.
Sounds easier than it actually is, but that, that, that's what it pays for.
It's a long process, but yes.
That helps us understand that. Make sure our budget staff understands. Sounds good. Any other questions about that? Judge, you've made note about the need for the 24th department. We have 23 Superior Court departments.
Correct.
10 commissioners.
Correct.
The council asked the court to think about the need of a 24th department in the context of behavioral, behavioral health funding and behavioral health funds. We asked the court to think about working with our behavioral health advisory group, community members who advise us on this. We asked about that in this current biennial budget, and if there was a need for, for that, could we pay for this perhaps? We would, we set aside funds from our behavioral health and therapeutic courts fund for this We didn't hear from the court on that, and you're very busy, but I wanted to give an opportunity for you to provide any thoughts about, is, is a 24th department not dedicated to that kind of work, just not a need for the court?
Well, I, I think, and again, Mr. Gaddis can come up as well, but I mean, I think the concern of the court was having a court specifically tied to funding and tied to a specific type of work as opposed to, I, I think it comes down to, I mentioned earlier in our presentation about, that we feel very strongly about that, you know, whatever money gets allocated to Superior Court, that, that it should be Superior Court deciding how it goes. And I think there is a concern about if there's a specific funding source that comes from a specific source like behavioral health, and, and it goes to us to create a department that says, okay, now that department has to be used for a certain type of result or for a certain type of cases. I think there is some concern about being tied to that is just, I think the, the concern that the court has raised. I'm not saying that it's rejected, I'm just saying that I think that's the concern that's been raised is just a little bit concerned about having just earmarked and being saying, this is what this department has to do. And I think that, that has been, at least in, in, within Superior Court, it's been a concern that's been raised.
Understood. Do you have one, one court fully managing these drug and mental health court cases today?
So currently, we, we currently have two. So currently, we have, we have one of our judges who does a drug court rotation, we have another judge that does the mental health court rotation. I will say that because the numbers have been down over the last couple of years, we've had those judges kind of filling in as needed for other things. Just to give you an example, with mental health court not having as many participants, whoever is in that mental health court rotation is frequently doing criminal motions that, not trials, but criminal motions that come up pre-trial, are taking, sometimes you might have a person who is pleading to five or different, five or six different charges at a time. Those take a while to do, and we just, we can't do those in some of our regular courts. So the mental health court will take some of those types of, of issues as well. In other words, just kind of pinch hitting as needed to do the work that's needed because the mental health court has not been full-time. So as that gets ramped up, and to the extent it does need to be full-time, we could not send some of those extra motions to that person. But it's basically just being, again, whatever work needs to get done is getting placed where, whoever has time or availability. But that's currently the way it is split.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that to us. We're at the, I don't have any other questions for Judge Ashcraft or the Superior Court. Does any other member have questions? Thank you, Judge. Thank you for explaining your decision, oh, excuse me. Judge Campbell.
So it's a different line item in our budget book, the dispute resolution center. But as I understand, they work in conjunction with Superior Court?
Which, what are you referring to? I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, the dispute resolution center?
Okay.
And I, I thought, I was interested to see this pulled out in a separate budget line item than Superior Court, but they work-
I believe they work more with district court than Superior Court.
Right.
District?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for presenting today. That's all my questions.
Thank you to the council. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, I believe the district court has the firmest relationship with the Center for Dispute and Resolution.
Small computer on my part.
It's all good? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. Thank you, Judge Ashcraft. We're at item five, the juvenile court's biennial budget presentation. I'd like to invite up Judge Arons. She's going to go straight to Mr. Bowles, the juvenile court administrator. She's a smart woman. Excuse, excuse me, Mr. Bookie, to help me introduce and orient us.
Thank you. The juvenile court is also in the legal tab. It begins on section eight, page 15. They also had a number of items, there's actually four, in the decision packet, and it was actually restoration. So I think Mr. Bowles will speak to the restoration of three positions, and there was one request that they made from the executive that doesn't appear fit and funded. But, you know, we can ask about that because there may be some ARPA money involved too. So let's, we'll try to close that loop.
Thank you for orienting us in our budget book so we can follow along, Mr. Bookie. Mr. Bowles?
Thank you, Council Chair Mello and other members of the council. My name is TJ Bowles, and I have been with the juvenile court for 23 years. I have the privilege of serving as the juvenile court administrator, and I do not take that role lightly. And today I've brought a small team with me. I've brought our presiding judge, Judge Sabrina Arons, as well as our fiscal manager, Stacy Kilmer. I'd like to thank the council for your ongoing support for young people. It does not go unnoticed. I'd like to also thank you for the template, which I'm going to follow today. Next slide. So it was, it was helpful to see the council's priorities as we looked at our work and trying to make sure that we're aligned. We feel confident that the work that we do is in support of and aligned with the priorities of the council. Next slide. So the following is our organizational chart of note is, you know, the juvenile court is underneath the Superior Court, so we report to the 23 Superior Court judges. A subset of those 23 judges make up our juvenile court executive committee, and that is who oversees the juvenile court. So we meet with them monthly, we go through policy, practice, decisions, things like that. And then you might be aware that, you know, our juvenile court has received a lot of national attention over the years for the work that they've done. And I, I just want to say that, you know, it's in large part due to the judicial leadership that we've had, and then the bulk of the credit goes to the 151 staff on this organizational chart. Dedicated folks, show up every day to work tires, tirelessly, really hard work, but are committed to kids and families, and I have a lot of admiration for the work they do, and I want to lift that up. Next slide. So when we look at our divisional, our functional areas, you know, we kind of break it out into four. I think all of them are important. You know, I love this work, I love the, everything that we do at the court. I do want to lift up the, the dependency. You know, this is just critical to the work we do because these are, you know, you look at the dependency referrals, and so this is, over half of the dependency children for abuse and neglect are under age five. So if you really think about that, like, we need to do right by these children to make sure that we're setting them up for success in the future, for it, to have success in Pierce County. So really, really think, you know, hard and heavy around, how do we support children and families who are coming into the system at a really early age? The next would be, you know, our largest department is detention, and the reason for that is it's a 24/7 operation, which is really, can provide a lot of challenges to keep that going, you know, 24/7. And, you know, the thing that we need to point out there is, you know, we're taking care of other people's children on a temporary status, so it's really crucial that we have enough staff, adequate staff, to maintain safety and security for the young people that we do get a chance to work with. And then most people are familiar with juvenile court, referred to often as Raymond Hall, for the offender work, and we also do that as well. And then the other side on the right there, the far, is just the administration, the IT, kind of the behind-the-scenes work. Next slide. This would kind of be a breakdown, again, similar to what I said before, the largest department to be in detention, probation, and our civil services, fairly similar in size. Next slide. So as we thought about, as we, you know, reflecting on our work and trying to fill out the template, again, appreciated the priorities, we identified six challenges that we wanted to lift up for the council today. And the first one is the increase that we're seeing in youth violence. You know, it's not lost on us, we share our community's concerns around the increase in youth violence. We know this is really important to the council, we know this is really important to the executive, we know this is really important to a lot of folks. In fact, we've recently shared data with the council around the increase. And while the increases are not quite as high as pre-COVID numbers, they still are up, they're trending up. Quarter one and quarter two were trending up. We're happy to report quarter three is trending a little bit down. But again, we're really watching closely, and we're engaged in partnerships to make sure that we're on top of it, and then collaborating to make sure that we're being responsive, holding young people accountable, and getting them the services they need. So that's top of mind for us. And the second would be secure detention. I mentioned the, the huge importance here, that these are other people's childrens that we're taking care of. Our average daily population last year in detention was 13. This year it's 26. We've doubled because of that spike. Now, that's not good on its own, but then you couple that with significant staffing shortages. We have anywhere from five to eight people, like vacancies at any one time, and then we also have injuries, so people out for that. So we have significant issues in detention. We, I, I can't thank HR enough for their, you know, creativity and their tireless work to help us, like rethink the way we recruit and we bring on new talent, but the reality is those efforts are not, we're not getting results, we're not getting enough people. It's really hard to compete with people who are giving bonuses and incentives. Neighboring county, counties are doing that, and we're losing good people to- Neighboring county, counties are doing that, and we're losing good people to other counties. So we're really struggling. Our overtime is off the charts. It's led to some safety, security issues, an increase in fights, an increase in behavior problems. This is top of mind for us. We're, we're looking forward to getting on top of this and getting a, a good workforce in there so we can really support the young people who are in our care. Next slide. So the, the next one comes in the child welfare area, and I applaud the state for the changes over the years. They've been pretty significant. The most recent one was 1227, which has just really made people rethink and redo the way we work. And it's really about keeping families together, which we agree with philosophically. The challenge is to make sure we have enough supports in place to keep families together. And so, you know, we're really, the courts are really grappling with increased time and, and tasks that they need to complete in each hearing, and the, the social workers and the, our staff are really struggling to, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of, of families to keep them, to mitigate risk and keep them in the home. And then the, the next one is, you know, just thinking about resources. When you think about young people and families, you know, we're, we're seeing a lot of conflict in the home, so we want to partner with others to make sure we're getting conflict resolution, we're empowering families, helping with supervision to make sure that young people are successful in the home. Also partnering with schools. That's an area where young people often who are connected to the court are not finding success in schools, so we can strengthen that partnership and make sure it's not a school-to-prison pipeline, so to speak. And the other thing is so many of our young people seem to touch multiple systems, and for anyone who's worked and had to be served by multiple systems, you know that that can be really challenging. There's a lot of barriers. There's a lot of wrong doors. And so I look forward to working with others to, like, make it so there isn't any wrong doors, and there's a little bit easier access to services for, for families who are already under chronic stress. This can be a, a real challenge, and so just helping people navigate systems is important. Next slide. So I've shared a few times over the years, and I shared recently, you know, the juvenile court, the youth justice system across the country and here locally continues to grapple with racial disparities. I've shared that data openly, widely with the media, with the council, with the executive, with others, the city council. I think it's important to be transparent about what we're seeing, invite others to come together and share data and examine exactly what's happening, and come together to make shared policy and practice decisions so we can move the needle on this. The next critical need that we identified is young people and families suffering mental health challenges. I think we all can recognize the, the impacts of COVID have been pretty significant on some people, and I think we're starting to really see that in schools, in some hospitals, and in the, in the youth justice system. And so you see a lot of trauma. You see a lot of young people using substances. You see a lot of people doing self-harm, and so we're just really in tune with that, and we want to partner with our local health department and other stakeholders to really look at this from a public health approach, supporting our young people and our families. Next slide. So I offered a few challenges that we lifted up, and now I want to talk about our priorities based on those challenges. So the first thing is, we really want our people that work at the juvenile court to feel valued, heard, supported, and have the tools they need so they can make a powerful impact with the young people and the families that we, we serve. We want to create a culture of innovation. We want to try new things. We don't want to keep doing the same thing that we've always done and getting the same results. So it's important that we create a culture where we can show up as our best selves and actually do good work. You know, I think of the, the analogy, if your cup is empty, then how are you going to be there to support others? So we got to make sure we're supporting each other so we are showing up, and we're present, and we're ready, and we're available to help people. The second one would be to, to collaborate. I see lots of opportunities to improve collaboration, true collaboration across systems with community, with community most impacted to come together and come up with solutions to what is happening in our community. The third is to, to collaborate with folks to eliminate the disparities. I want to give a shout out to our family council. We have an active, engaged member, family council members who have their families who've been through our system and are willing to come back and give their time and energy to help make our system better for the next generation coming through, and I can't thank them enough. We also have partnerships with mentors who have lived experience in the system and come back and do the same thing with our young people, help them navigate the system in a way so they can find success. And I applaud their efforts, and I appreciate their partnership. Next slide. The next is we want to keep children in the homes. We want to keep families safe. This is going to require a little bit of rethinking of resources perhaps around how we support families. Families need stability. Families need, you know, support for the challenges that they're facing. And so we want to be partnering with others to be in a position to support families and walk alongside them. The next one is being trauma-informed. You know, I mentioned all the trauma that we're seeing with young people and families. The last thing we want to do is cause more trauma, so we need to make sure that we're really informed, and all of our policies and practices are really mindful and intentional, and we're not causing undue harm for families, undue stress, undue pressure, that we're really understanding their, their plights, and we're walking alongside them. And the other thing is we got to make sure, as I mentioned before, that we're monitoring our own stress levels, because that can be really challenging to continue to work with folks, and, you know, many of the work, much of the work that we do, we do not see right away. We don't see the results. What happens is oftentimes in our field is young people come back five and six years later, and they say, you know what, thank you so much. I was not hearing it at the time. I was angry with you. You were making me do all these things. You were trying to talk sense into me, but I wasn't getting it. Now I get it. Thank you so much. So that's great, but at the time, it doesn't feel great, right? And so we need to be thinking about that, and keep in mind that people, we are helping people, it just doesn't always feel like it at the moment. And the next is, it's really important to me that we create, we improve the safety in our detention center. We have to get enough adequate staff in there. This is a top priority for us. We are actively recruiting. We are, we are literally interviewing on a, just a, like, when you come in, it's an interview. And it, it used to be like, oh, we'll set you up. We had a whole, now it's just revolving, like constantly. As soon as we get someone, we're going to interview them, we're going to try to get them through the process to get them in. We are that desperate to get people in. Like, we're just, we're really struggling. So based off of that, so we were asked, and Judge Ashcraft talked about it, we are the same, so we were asked to take a 4% reduction from the executive's office, and in doing so, we identified a number of reductions. Eight of those were FTE positions, and others were some, like, programmatic-type budget decisions. So we asked at the time, you know, eight was a lot of positions to, to eliminate, but we understood the, the exercise, and we understood the fiscal limitations that we're under. But we did ask for a decision package for four things, and that was to keep a detention officer, so we didn't have to take further reductions in detention. We asked for, to maintain a juvenile probation counselor, juvenile case monitor, which is the person who's out there with the young people at these programs that we've talked about. And then the last one was to allow us to continue to use funding for our positive youth development programs. You know, this is the alternatives to, to youth detention, where young people are out making positive connections, learning new skills, getting on the right track. And so we wanted to increase, maintain and increase funding for that. Next slide. So again, I mentioned this right before, as part of the exercise, the 4% for us was about 1.5 million per year. So we identified eight positions that were either open at the time or soon to be open. And we identified eight. We asked the county executive's office to maintain three of those, and in their budget, they have restored those. That, that was their recommendation. And those three were the detention officer, the probation officer, and the case monitor. Next slide. Again, we also asked for, and I, I do want to thank the council for, the council has a long history of investing in our positive youth development programs, actually have been out to the programs. And so I applaud your, your commitment to the positive youth development programs for court-connected young people. The ARPA funding allowed us to sustain some of those programs when our grant funds from Annie Casey dried up, so that was much appreciated. And in order to hold young people accountable in a timely way, and at the same time, get them the help they need and get them connected to positive people and positive places in our community, we really have to have alternatives. We have to have these, in, in Pierce County, we're really fortunate because we have so many community partners who are willing to help young people. So we really are hoping to continue, get to get funding to support our community partners serving young people and families. Next slide.
Can I pause you there?
Yes.
Mr. Bull. I'm sure a number of us have questions here. This is a really high priority. Let's have questions about what we've heard so far. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. I was going to zero right in on this ARPA funding here, and thank you for anticipating that and providing a slide on it and being, kind of being prepared, ready to discuss it. When I look at the decision package over here, it says initially it was 370,000 was their initial funding request. I'm now seeing on the screen, you're saying 350,000, which is only, which is a small percentage. But the, help me under, understand whether this, you said this comes from the Annie Casey Foundation grant, so how it came to be, how we plugged ARPA in there, and then what kinds of programs are we, are, are we currently funding that are, were proposed not to be funding going forward?
Yeah, those are the current programs we fund out of ARPA? So, yes. So if I'm tracking correctly, so originally, when we started our probation transformation initiative, we, one of the things that was really important is, is if you're, to have alternatives to detention, you need to have something else in the community to support young people. So we did a, an effort of where we did youth forums, and we did family forums, and we asked people what kind of programs they wanted. And we then went out to those programs, and we asked them if they'd be willing to partner with us in serving young people and developing alternatives to detention. We got funding from Annie Casey for the first five years to support that. We were only supposed to get funding for three years, but because of the good work, they, they continued to fund it. When that funding was running out, it happened to be that we were in a position to ask the county for ARPA funds. And so we were, we got, how much? 250 per year? Over to you. So we got 250 to continue with some of the programs, and we came up with other ways, state grants and things like that to fund some of the others to, to make up for it. So we still have a number of other programs that doesn't meet the need, you know, this just supports some of our community partners. We have about 13 or 14 programs, and the ARPA funds actually covers how many of those?
About two-thirds.
About two-thirds of the programs. So the other ones are either county funds, our general fund, or maybe state grants, things like that. So, and then I think the executive put in there 350,000 for the two years to support the positive youth development programs.
Executive did or did not?
Did.
Did. In, in the ARPA proposal, there's $350,000-
Yes.
-for youth diversion programs. That's what we're talking about, right?
Exactly.
And I see executive budget staff nodding. The $350,000 in the ARPA proposal for the next biennium, that is for what Mr. Bull is talking about.
Okay. So in the decision packet where it's zeroed out here, the, the 370 says it's not funded, but it's picked up over here on this one.
Funded in ARPA.
Yay. All right. One amendment I don't have to make.
That's what I understand. Thank you. Thank you for asking that.
Yeah, no, it's an important program. I think one of the, the best ones that we have going. I, I would ask, just to be consistent, what is your confidence, because ARPA, you know, we have to spend it or we lose it, what is your confidence that you can get the full $350,000 spent?
Confident.
Big thumbs up for those-
Yes.
-who were watching at home. There was a big thumbs up that came. That's all I have then. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bull, for all your work and your team behind you that support that really important work. My questions are, and I have a couple. One is, we just heard from Superior Court that they were reducing their ad litem, one of their positions, and one of this, the measures that you provide for us is how good you are at making sure that we get families connected with those services. So I'm just wondering, I, I don't know if that position impacts your work or not, and because I don't know the relationship since it's all under Superior Court. So just looking to understand, since you say you're on track according to the data with providing that service, but we're cutting somebody.
Correct. And I'm not sure, and I apologize, I fully appreciate what the guardian ad litem's role is down there.
Or just for heightened conflict with divorce cases with children. That's how they come in. So it's not, doesn't relate to-
So it's a different person? Okay. I just, that's what I was making sure. I just want to make sure we weren't cutting, because I didn't see an ad litem in here. So, okay. Thank you. That was the first one. The second one is around the, the drug and alcohol counselor and the licensed LPN positions. So we're reducing a drug and alcohol counselor, and we're removing an LPN, and, and I don't know, I guess I just want to understand with a larger population, more mental health, more drug-involved youth, I feel like those are positions we need, but maybe you haven't been able to hire them for a really long time. So just looking for understanding of why those two positions, or was it just one of those, we have to make 4% go away, and you may not know, but just wondering.
Yeah. I mean, I, in an ideal world, we wouldn't have offered those or put those on the table. But to meet the, the 4% exercise, we, we had to dig deep. And to your point, the, the nurse is hard. It's a hard position to fill. We did have that position open, in all transparency, for about three, three and a half years, and we're actively recruiting. We'd get a, maybe one or two applicants a year, but once they learned of the work inside the juvenile detention center and the hours in the evening and weekends, many of them chose to, to not follow through. So it's a tough position to fill, given the, the pay scale and everything. Is the need there? Absolutely. With the increased population, the increased acuity, the increased trauma that young people are facing. But again, to meet the exercise, we had to, and it was an open position, so we put that in there.
So kind of coming full circle on that, I'm wondering about, I'm assuming we can't just let kids sit, like, they have to be seen by somebody. We do that through contracting. We're taking them to the hospital. Is there, is it, costs us more in the end to do that, to, to seek those services outside of Raymond Hall?
Potentially, if, if something significant happens. We do have one full-time nurse who works Monday through Friday, eight to five, and helps coordinate, and we have a doctor who comes in once a week to see the young people and then would refer out as necessary. So anytime a young person has, like, a serious injury, let's say they're in the gym, working out, and they sprain their ankle, we generally will have to shut down our building and take them downtown to get x-rays. That's not uncommon. So like that, like, we generally will refer, take kids out to be seen on an emergency basis, or we will wait for the doctor to come in on Tuesdays and see them if it's not an emergent situation. And then the one nurse we have will help coordinate, navigate with follow-up treatment with the family, follow-up with the providers. So, I mean, it's not, not completely unmanageable, but, you know, with the volume being at 38 kids today, it can be kind of challenging-
Okay.
... with one person doing that.
Okay. I may need to think about- I may need to think about that a little bit more, but thank you.
Mr. Bull, I'm not sure if you have it in front of you, but we have, we have your budget book open and we have your staffing summary. The, the positions you were just speaking to, the, the medical type positions, there's a nurse you said who coordinates, is that the medical services coordinator, the one FTE, is that that person?
Correct. Yes.
I'm, I'm not trying to ask you questions you don't, if you need a reference, we're happy to give it to you.
Oh, that is correct.
Okay. And so that's that person. The, the doctor type person, did they, is that a contracted out position or would we see that in the staffing system?
Contract.
Contracted position. On an as-needed basis, or they, they come regularly?
Regularly. Yep.
The diversion coordinator, you, you, help us understand, it's, it's not filled for the next biennium. You spend so much time doing diversion. Help, help us understand why the diversion, how you do diversion without a diversion coordinator?
Yeah, I mean, those position, those duties go to other folks essentially. The diversion coordinator was a position that was in pay below a probation counselor, and so had some limitations to their duties. And so we essentially, a few years ago, promoted that person to a probation counselor so they could do more diversion coordination. And that position was in line to either be filled or to be re-assessed throughout the agency to meet other gaps. But then again, when posed with a 4% reduction, seeing that that position was open, any of the creativity to redo it, it was like, no, we, we have to offer this. As opposed to offering a, another body.
Let me ask it this way. What, what of the diversion program doesn't happen if you don't have the diversion coordinator?
Those duties are picked up by other people. They just do more.
Vice Chair Campbell.
I think we're going to touch on some of this on a future slide, some of these FTEs. But the, also, we were talking about the medical. So we're also reducing the LPN, Licensed Practical Nurse. Is that currently a vacant position that we're just not filling, or is that one that we will be discontinuing?
Yeah, so we've had that position open, I think, around three years. We've been actively recruiting for it. Every once in a while, we get a candidate. They don't tend to follow through once they learn more about the position. So it's been vacant for a while. We just haven't been able to fill it. So given the exercise, we put that on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. There may be more questions from many of us when you get to your budget reduction. Next slide. Councilor Hoover.
Thank you, Chair. This is piggybacking on Councilmember Campbell. Have, have you considered maybe contracting on an on-call basis with an LPN? Is that possible?
That is possible. So we do have a contract with, I think it's called Right at Home, which is a nursing service, which they essentially are on-call nurses. They have contracts like with Seattle Public Schools. When their nurses are out, like maternity leave or sick, they will fill in so the schools have somebody. And so we have a contract with them, a small contract, where they can come in on an as-needed basis to the juvenile court when we have spikes in issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just want to note for the record that Councilmember Morell has been participating in the Zoom Room since towards the beginning of your presentation. So thank you for being with us, Councilmember Morell. Mr. Bull, I believe you're on your diversity, equity, and inclusion slide, Slide 14.
Thank you. So I think I've lifted up a few of our, our activities already. You know, the diversity, equity, inclusion is really important to the juvenile court. We have an active equity team, which is a cross-system group of folks who come together on a regular basis. It's a very large team where we really provide education, like, you know, that our history in our country can provide great insight into where we are today. And so really understanding our education and the history of racial disparities has been really helpful for our court. And then also like having courageous conversations around how it shows up in our work, as well as analyzing the data that we're seeing and making policy and practice decisions based off that. So we've made a number of, you know, policy decisions, we've made practice decisions. We continue to try to get better in this area. Again, I, I want to lift up the work of our team and the courageous efforts that they've done, and then as well as our community partners pushing us to do, think differently and do things differently. You know, it, it really does take a village to move things forward, and we really want to embrace that. And then the other piece I would say is, I think I have it written in here, around, you know, we have a number of pathways, you know, that I just appreciate, like the family counsel, the, the mentors that we work with, as well as our community partners who we have, you know, strong partnerships with and ongoing collaboration around what they're seeing, what they think would be helpful for the court to, to shift and make programmatic decisions. And so, you know, I think all of that together has helped to inform our work and drive our race equity work. Next slide. So our capital projects, I think many of you have been out to the court and you know that the juvenile court has a lot of inadequacies. You know, we have HVAC issues, we have sewer line issues, we, you know, our fire suppressor issues, you know, we have 88, like, we just have a lot of issues at a juvenile court. And I know that Facilities has been a great partner, and I know that they're actively working on a plan for us. And so I, I'll defer to them to bring forward the capital facilities issues. Next slide. So the next slide gets into, you know, our budget reductions, and I think I've mentioned a few of these, like eliminating open positions at the time because of the 4% exercise, the other line items that we had to, to tighten the belt on to get to the 4% was reducing our extra hires budget. So extra hires could be working in detention or other parts of the facility. Reducing our supplies budget. Next slide. Reducing our professional services. In that professional services was some of our community partnerships. And so that was just where, again, the ask was to like, you know, help support us to be able to fund our community partners. But we had to take a reduction there. The communications budget was a county offering. And we reduced our travel budget, we reduced our training budget. And then the three positions that we asked for in the budget that the executive put forward were restored, so we identified that as well. Next slide. Okay, well, I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to share. You know, we are eager to strengthen the partnerships and work towards greater alignment, all in support of helping young people and families in our community. And if you have any questions, we are here.
Thank you, Mr. Bull. Judge Aaron, before we open it up for all kinds of questions, do you have any remarks for us? Not trying to put you on the spot, but you're incredibly, your leadership is very valued, and thank you for making time to be with us and everything you do for the court.
Thank you. I'd be remiss, Chair Mello, not to take an opportunity when there's a microphone and being able to speak to folks of authority and power to be able to just say how much I admire the work of the juvenile court employees. It has been my privilege to work alongside them since my rotation in August. As you know, we have 18-month rotations, and I'll be rotating out in January, and I will definitely miss the folks that I've worked with. And just knowing that they are committed to positive outcomes for youth, it strengthens my heart and also knows that there's, there's hope for our community. I think oftentimes people will look towards kind of youth violence and, or violence as a whole, and say that there must be something going on with the courts, or there must be something wrong with the courts. And really what I think is, you know, the youth violence that we've been seeing is indicative of the health of our community. And so what I've heard from you all in terms of the questions that you've asked both of Superior Court and of our juvenile court is, is a concern for our community. And so we all really want what's best for those youth and families. And so I just appreciate the partnership that you all have provided. I've loved that several of you have come out and toured our facility so that you can see what we're actually working with. And for those who haven't had the opportunity, please come out. We'd love to have you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Judge. We'll keep Mr. Bull on the hot seat, but we know you're here to support him. Thank you, Judge, very much for your leadership. Vice Chair Campbell.
Welcome back to the hot seat. So when I'm looking at the budget reduction slide, the first one, I'm seeing four, after some were restored, four FTEs being reduced and the extra hires budget being cut. But the, how? I know your answer is going to be, we'll find a way to do it. And I don't want that as an answer. How impactful are these four cuts going to be? The LPN one, you said, yeah, it's practically been open, so pretty minimal there. But the other three, legal assistant two, they're, they're on the screen, but...
Yeah, I think so. We have, we identified originally eight. The executive has three restored, so we have five that we have identified for reduction. Those are currently vacant. And, you know, to just candidly respond to the question, you know, I think not all of them are going to have the same impact. I, I would say three of them are probably going to have a, an impact on other people in the agency. Like somebody is going to have to do more, which we often ask people to do more, right? So yes, we, we will have to do more with less. We have no intentions of doing less for our community and less for the young people and families. If anything, we, we all need to do more to help. And so we, we intend to do that with the resources given.
And, and I deeply appreciate that. I know that's how you work. But when we see increasing youth violence like we've seen over the last couple of years, and I want to thank you for your work and partnership with the City of Tacoma Mayor's Task Force on really addressing youth violence. I know you've been there, you know, discussing from your perspective, many of the influences. I know, I, I would like to, as we go through this, know that every proposal that we have to restore, while now it may sound good when related against everything, may not be best. But I would like to look at restoring probably at least two of these positions. But I would need guidance from you as to which two would be most impactful. From, you know, because if I start picking, I can pick some because they sound good, but I need to know from you, doing the job, what would be best.
Absolutely. Be happy to follow up on that.
Maybe of all of them, maybe give them all in ranked order? Because then if we don't get there, we, we have an idea of the ones that are still reduced, perhaps a rank order, so that if we get to where we can, addressing youth violence or at least not reducing our response to youth violence, I think should be a really core thing for our council this year. Then we have some guidance on how to best do that. Thank you very much for all the work that you do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I'm looking for a little education. Do we have social workers, they're just called something different, that work at, with you?
No, we do not. The county does not. The state does. So it is a partnership in dependency. So the way, you know, the, the state files the dependency petition, they have the social workers, they come into our courtroom and hit, with our judges, and the judges assign a guardian ad litem, which are our staff from the juvenile court. And they serve as the eyes and ears of the court and, and act in the best interest of the, the children. So the, but the state is the guardians when there's a dependency petition. So the state's social workers are partnering with our staff guardian ad litem, working on cases.
Okay. And then, so when I'm talking about, so you have probation, but you also have probation counselors. Are they doing more work with the family, the school, the, the youth that we're talking about? Is that, so in my brain, that's like a social worker, right? They're, that they have maybe more tools than a social worker? Is, is that part of that work? And there's several of them, 57 of them?
Correct. So the way the, that we are set up at the juvenile court is we have some 52, like total juvenile probation counselor positions. Some of them can be assigned to the offender to work with young people referred for a crime. Some of those could be referred as in the GAL department, so serving as a probation counselor job description, but they're in the role of a guardian ad litem. And they can also be in the truancy, at-risk youth, also as a probation counselor. So the probation counselor is the umbrella kind of job description, but they can be assigned to one of those.
Okay. So they're kind of working across the board and looking at the, the whole child and all the different angles that we might come in and support that youth? Okay. I just, because I didn't see social work. I just want to make sure we were, I know you do that, I just didn't know what it was called on here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had to check. Thank you, Chair.
Councilor Hoover.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of a couple of things. What would you say are the biggest indicators that are putting youth into, into detention or violence? I'm going to guess Homes Without Dads. And of the programs that we have out there that are facilitating youth violence reduction, do you see any themes or any particular ones that work the best?
Yeah, so I mean, I think what we're seeing right now as far as the, the increase, if I were to look at, you know, just 2023, the increase in referrals are for robberies and assaults. So...
Do you think, you know, what's causing so much youth violence? Or the indicators that this is happening in this, this child's life so we can predict something in the future? That's why, are you, what are those indicators that you are familiar with or?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, so I think there's, it's a really, you know, my, I don't want to evade the question at all, but I do think it's a really complex issue. So I think COVID is certainly a factor in all of this and, and the fracturing of support systems that was happening during that time and the isolation and the impact on young people's brains at that time. I think social media is a, a really huge challenge for our young people and being able to navigate that and be able to separate what's real from what's on the screen. I think access to guns is a major issue. You know, back in the, back in the day, conflict was handled much differently than it is now. Now guns are involved and it escalates very quickly to something that many kids did not realize. And, you know, kids in general, they lack consequential thinking, they're very impulsive, they tend to have conflict with one another. So, you know, there's already that kind of elevated risk inherent with being a, a young person. So add the weapons and things like, and the social media, it just becomes really challenging. And then the other is, you know, I think we have a lot of families that are under chronic stress and, you know, poverty and instability and not having the resources provides this chronic stress, and it changes the way you show up and function. And I think we need, really need to grapple with, how do we get supports in place to help families who are really struggling? As opposed to ripping them apart or taking them and putting them in, in custody? Like, how do we really lean in and support that family who is struggling right now? Doesn't mean they're always going to struggle, but right now they're struggling. And so what are the temporary supports we can put in place to walk alongside them, guide them, and then pull out and let them thrive?
Interesting. And you had mentioned on detention officers and hiring bonuses. Would you, are, are bonuses more important or restoring FTEs?
Let me make sure I understand your question. So you're asking if I had to choose between...
Agencies taking detention officers through hiring bonuses? Are, are hiring bonuses more important or restoring FTEs? I'm asking for someone else, so I'm trying to discern it myself. You were talking about other agencies taking detention officers through hiring bonuses?
Yeah, so what I'm referring to is, you know, I had a recent example where I had two, two people that were sitting with me at the final interview. They were great. They were passionate about serving this community. They both lived in Pierce County, were passionate, they had histories and they wanted to support young people. When we called them to offer them the job... them the job, they said, well, another county is offering me a $5,000 bonus to start. Sorry. And another one said, another county is offering us a $2,500 bonus to start. Sorry. So that's where it, that's challenging. When we don't offer that, it's hard to compete. And so we're losing people that live here in Pierce County, care about kids, and now they're going to work in King County and Kitsap County. That is a real challenge for me.
I didn't think that was happening to your department. Yes?
It's absolutely happening.
Okay.
And in fact, if you play it out as well, if, if, you know, that we get referrals to refer people to the sheriff and the Department of Corrections, if you go out and you find somebody, you get a referral bonus. But you, if you want to tell somebody to go work with the future generation and the future of our, of our great city and county, they get nothing. So we're competing internally as well for candidates who want to work in the correctional system. And the juvenile court is not even, not even, not even competitive.
How are the stats with youth that have adults in the, in the home or relatives that are in incarceration? Do you have any comments on the effect of that? Or how that is carrying out these days?
If I'm tracking correctly, so we do ask that question and we gather it in our risk assessments. And over time, I don't have the current data, but I will say over time, that's one of our top adverse childhood experiences. So the, the top adverse childhood experiences are physical or sexual abuse, domestic violence and neglect, and then apparent incarceration. So that's always kind of in the top.
That's what I was asking. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought, I didn't realize that the same bonuses we were applying for our corrections officers in this jail wouldn't apply to your detention officers out at yours. What's that? Sitting here looking at the budget, but it's clear as day. Why it doesn't. But it never really clicked with me while we were creating these programs that we weren't giving you the same assistance and opportunity that we were giving our sheriff's department. And so I apologize that we didn't catch that, because it should have been, we're definitely going for similar jobs, classifications, and recruiting from the same pool of people and thereby competing with ourselves. Like you say, Chair is a wonderful person and he's remaining here. But if someone was to get $5,000 or if he was looking at bonuses, he would still choose to stay here. You're missing an earlier conversation in the day. But the, yeah, I think we need to, we're, work on that. What would help me is how many hires you think you would have over the next biennium? I know you don't know with certainty. Of course, we never know. But I will, before you leave here today, I'll give you a slide that kind of breaks something out that gives me some information. If you can kind of plug in your numbers to help us see that, that would be great.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles, one of your, one of your multifaceted answers to Constable Hoover's question, it is complicated, but I think you addressed it quite well on the fly. You, you did talk about family supports and what families need with families who are in poverty, families who are in extreme stress, who are working multiple jobs to try to make ends meet, under stress for so many different reasons, racism, poverty, all kinds of issues. If you, if you were, if your team who were supporting families who had young people who were in the, in the court, if you had dollars to do family supports, what would that, what would that program look like to you? What kind of supports would you provide?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a fantastic opportunity to bring back to our team and have that conversation. And I think they would be, like, really energized by that. You know, some of the things that I've heard over time is the basic needs. You know, families are struggling. Some are paycheck to paycheck. There's transportation issues. There's diapers. There's, you know, house bills that, you know, they're behind on. And so just, just to make it to like even, you know, getting these basic needs. But yeah, I think, you know, to have a more robust and thoughtful answer, you know, I take it back to our team who works directly inside the homes. And I think we could offer up, you know, just some, some thoughts around that.
Appreciate that.
That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Constable Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. That reminded me of part of the one question I was asking but forgot about, was of all the programs that we do have in youth violence prevention, is there a theme that you think works the best or has been most successful? Ones with sports, ones with classes, ones with music lessons or something? I don't know if there are any for that. But programs that have, that you see maybe have the best effect in raising up the, the life of the child?
Correct. Yes. So I think the way I would think about it is, you know, there's so much diversity in our young people. And some like sports, some like cooking, some like, you know, animals. So I think what we've tried to do is create a robust menu so it speaks to all different kinds of young people. Where a young person may not want to go play basketball at the YMC, another person may want to go work with animals and like horses and things like. So we just have a wide range. I think what stands out with all of them and what really works with young people is having a safe place, having a place where they feel listened to, where they feel heard, where they feel like they have opportunities to learn and grow and try different things and to process what's going on in the world. So many of the young people don't have positive outlets and places just to process what's happening in the world. And quite frankly, for sometimes for me, I have a hard time understanding what's happening in our world. And so as a young person, like just helping them process and understand how they can contribute and how they can show up, how can their voice be heard? How can they get their needs met? And so I think that's, the programs do a really good job of engaging young people and creating a pathway for them to open up about what's going on with them. And then also, like, have you thought about this? Here's some new ways to handle stress. When you get angry, instead of going off and punching someone or punching a wall, have you thought about this? Have you tried to count backwards from 10? Have you tried to think, you know, so just like offering tangible opportunities to rethink the way they show up when they get frustrated or when they get angry or when they're not feeling well. So I think those are the key components of a great program.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles, coming back to your final slide about budget reductions, I want to make sure we understand. You put forward these budget reductions because you were directed to. And we do only have so many, so many resources to invest throughout the county. The, the items that were restored, the three items that were restored, those are your top priorities. Those are the ones that you requested to be restored. Those are your top priorities for the department?
That is correct.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Bowles?
Vice Chair Campbell.
Mr. Bowles, I, props more for Director Robinson or Julie. The, just going to loop back to that recruitment bonus that I think should be fairly applied. If, and I know we're not supposed to be taking up policies during this time of season, but if we were to go back and adjust that policy effective, literally as immediately as we could to allow the same benefits to recruitment benefits, is that something we could fit in? Would that also require a budget reallocation for this year? Do we have the capacity for it? I know we don't know all the numbers of what you'd be looking at, but it sounds like it's a handful, but you're clearly having people walking away from the table that are qualified.
Gary Robinson with the Finance Department. Remind us that the funding that was used for the incentives was coming from ARPA. So we'll need to validate whether utilization of ARPA funds for juvenile court incentives is a permissible use of the funds potential, but I just need to validate that. In addition, this is a change in compensation, so it would be subject to bargaining, because the members of juvenile court that this would be offered to are within a bargaining unit. And then with regard to funding, it would likely require a budget amendment to provide additional authorization unless there were savings within the budget at juvenile court to be able to cover the cost.
We could also do it prospectively.
Yes, and that's an option, too.
And would it be best to do it as a new one or just take the current vehicle that we have for corrections and/or sheriff's deputies and just add this onto that and say this is also an eligible classification?
I believe it would be a choice whether you want to have it to be added to an eligible use of the funds that have already been appropriated or, or provide additional funds. I think those are the two options you have.
Okay. Not to get too far really away from why we're here, but that's one of the things about budgets. Sometimes we discover mistakes. So if we could work on that, and that's something that I think as soon as possible, I'd like for us to get in place because I hate to see good employees walking away when we have a program in place. And I think many of us, or at least I did, I thought that it would be covered under the general when we're trying to attract this classification employee, forgetting that there was a technicality of it being a different one. So unless there's any council members who would object to pursuing that, of course.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Bowles, I want to thank you. I don't see any other hands at this time. I want to thank you for the work it's taken to prepare for today, prepare the, the presentation for today. A lot of hard work goes into budget development, not only to the executive but to the council. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your hard work every day, leading your team. We're, we continue to be just so grateful that we have a leader like you with your values and focus every single day, leading the juvenile court. We're very fortunate to have you. So thank you for being with us and answering our questions and engaging in this dialogue. Lots, lots of follow-up here. We're very interested in the success of, of the work that you and your team do. So we look forward to the follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are at council member discussion questions and comments related to the proposed budget. We've heard discussion today, I'll be happy to start, just to kick off the discussion and invite others to chime in. We've heard a discussion today from the Superior Court and some requests from them about how to make some of their allocated dollars a little bit more flexible by reducing a guardian ad litem position and using those exist, those same dollars to do other budget items that they think are more important. So I'll be working with staff to, to work on that. We have some other things to think about in the letter that I handed everyone that I received from Superior Court last night. Encourage everyone to read that. We, we asked a lot of questions about the juvenile court. There's a good conversation going on about incentives to support the retention and hiring. Ask our staff to please follow up with the court and other folks to begin thinking about that on our, on our behalf. And definitely want to think about how we put that in the council's budget. And also this notion of, of family supports. If they had flexible dollars for family supports, what could that look like within our procurement issues? How could we do that in a streamlined way, right, and not have a contract for a gajillion different things? What, what, what could family supports look like to support the juvenile court? I'm interested in pursuing what we heard in that regard from Mr. Bowles today as well. I'd like to open it up to other reflections by council members about, and we didn't have time to have further dialogue about the sheriff's department either. So again, they're coming back for a follow-up session, but we, we had to break for, for lunch and, and other meetings that many of us had to do over the lunch hour. So opening it up to further discussions and comments. We'll start with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank everyone for their work and presentations. And as we're cracking into the budget book and the decision packages, I do appreciate the work that's been done to put them together. I know I was clear with some of my colleagues and others may have sensed that. I was very frustrated with this morning's presentation. I felt it was a lot more, it was heavy on the presentation, light on the discussion, because we're talking about things that weren't really even new to this budget. And you're talking about the largest part of our budget and we had some of the least discussion around it. And that is not how I want to see us going forward. I know we can submit a lot of our questions in writing. One of my biggest frustrations of budgeting in the past has been, we submit a question, it's not answered, it's not answered. We might get an answer back just before we're getting ready to vote, and it doesn't fully answer the question. And now we don't really have time to unpack it and to find out. For me, that's not going to be acceptable this time, particularly since we're looking at cuts. And if we're reducing services, we need to be more clear on the questions that we ask. And so I just want to kind of set this standard of if council members are asking questions, that we are getting responded to. In the past, it's been kind of allowed to not be responded to, responded too late, or not fully responded to. And I'm going to, I will move to delay the adoption of the budget if I don't feel like we're getting our questions asked, answered, asked or, or an opportunity to ask our questions. But I, last budget was better. The budget before was really bad about that, from my perspective. So I'm hopeful. I think we're going to get there. I just want to be really clear about that expectation from the beginning. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Appreciate that. I know you know this. We do have a statutory deadline to adopt a budget. So we can't, so we need to do everything it's going to take to get council's questions answered and this council to agree to a budget. We do have a statutory deadline to adopt a budget.
Sometimes that's, sorry to, to, sometimes where I feel that things aren't always answered because they know we're going to run out of time.
I hear you. So, and that, some other things we've designed to be very responsive to that known issue. It's a very real issue. We've flipped the, we're doing communities of the whole a couple of weeks earlier than historical. Our, so that's one big thing. A couple of more weeks to understand the budgets, get our questions to the departments. That should help a little bit. Again, very, very known issue. Our policy staff has been asked, when they submit the, a list of questions, whether it's the first round or the second round or the third round of questions, our policy staff has been asked to put a deadline on response. So it's not just hanging out there and get back to us whenever you can. There's a clear deadline that we're asking departments to follow up on. So today, it's Mr. Bridges' responsibility on these subjects. Yesterday, it was Ms. Merrick, so on and so forth. Those are some of the management tools we've put in place to try to manage against this really real issue. Thank you for raising it and being clear about what the council's expectation is. Constable Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I think one of the things, and I kind of dug into it a little bit this morning with, with contracting for services around our medical care and then to see some of the things here. I guess I'd like a holistic look at how much we're paying, two pathways, how much we're paying for care through contract and any risk? how much we're paying for care through contract and any risk payments that are related to care problems that arise. So looking at those two things and how those two are playing. And the reason I'm wondering about that is we have contracting going on for services. Are we seeing a higher number of claims coming to the county because services maybe aren't meeting our need? But the only way we can provide services that we figured out so far is contracting services. But if we're paying for it twice, out, out the risk door and out the contract, maybe we need to look at changing the dollar amount towards the, the contract itself or looking at a different way. So I'm just, I'm really curious about that as far as the care, both of those in our jail here and also our youth, as far as medical supports, especially as, as both kids and adults are coming in sicker, cost, you know, taking more time. If, if we have a for-profit company that's coming in and doing our care, are they really, or is it a for-profit? Like I don't know enough about it and I just really think that understanding that would be good, kind of thinking about that long-term. I just don't know, I, I don't know if that's in here, how I see the cost for medical care other than I know it went up by what, $4 million, $2 million?
Just for the juvenile court?
No, for the adult court or adult.
For Corrections Bureau, about $3 million or so.
It was a lot, right? And, and it looks like it's gone up, if I remember, I'm doing this from memory, it looks like it's gone up $2 million each biennium. So by projections, we aren't going to be able to afford the medical care that we are required to do. So starting to think about what are the other costs associated with that? Are there other pathways, you know, looking at what are other jails doing? But I just, I think the long-term, at the small scale in the juvenile court or in the juvenile facility and then the big scale, our full-on jail, what, what are we doing and how are we, as our population and inmates age, as our youth are coming in addicted to substances with greater mental health issues? A contract may not provide enough care for what is really needed, but it may be the only thing we can find for now, but maybe we haven't looked for something else because it's easier to just keep doing what we're doing. But is it meeting our needs? And I think looking at that risk claim could be an interesting way of kind of going, comparing, like, oh, we're paying out X number of dollars in claims or kids are getting, ending up in the hospital or adults are ending up in the hospital when preventative care would have, because we're paying for it no matter what. But is it really the best way to do it? If that bill's going to keep going up $2 million every two years, it's not doable. So that's my big wondering and, and I think the hiring bonus question, I vaguely remember talking about it when the first, first time hiring bonuses came up in the back of my mind. It may have been something that just went through my head and then just never came out my mouth, that does happen. And, and so because they're a different contract, they're not law enforcement under that same umbrella, I think they were just kind of left out, but it was a question. So I think looking at what, if that's something that we want to do, what does that look like? Because we also did retention bonuses because we didn't want to lose people, so then that changes the dollar amount. So we really need to kind of think about that and then think about the fund source for that and then what, what would it look like moving forward? How many does he need? I don't remember how many vacancies are in juvenile court, but the idea of making it safer, definitely having more staff will, will help make it safer. So I know there's a need and I'll stop there. I have a couple other things, but I'll ask later. Yeah, my brain's kind of fried.
Mr. Bridges, you got that question. Vice Chair Campbell?
And just doing some quick look at this, when I add up the corrections deputies plus patrol deputies to 60 plus 202, so 460, 36 out there, so 8% of the other deputies. So if we just do that math out, it would be less than 10% of what we were already allocating out for bonuses. The retention part is something that'd have to be looked at, but I think that's what we're going to look at. But the quick math on me says it should be a less than 10% delta. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, I want to just raise, and you know, I realize the, I want to come back to the Sheriff's Department, we didn't have time for discussion this morning. But as, as they are coming back next week, I want to make note that Chief Lundberg was not able to make it this morning. So we did not have the subject matter expert with us to talk about patrol and the various aspects of patrol that many of us are very interested in, the traffic unit, property crime unit, it's normal patrol. So, but Ms. Chapman, as you coordinate for us, really hoping Chief Lundberg is able to be with us next Thursday to continue the discussion with the Sheriff's Department. I want to make note, I realize the performance measures are not, and they're adopted as part of the budget. I realize they're not, we're not allocating financial resources to the performance measures. Ms. DeMuth, I know you take the performance measures very seriously, as do we. The, the performance measures in the Sheriff's Department seem weird to me. They're not getting at what I think average folks are hoping to look at when they look at the Sheriff's Department around, I'm just, just normal things. And so I, I really would like us to, to look at performance measures that, that matter to real people. But perhaps these are performance measures that matter to administrators, which is fine, and maybe there are many more performance measures that we're not seeing in the budget book, but these, these performance measures don't seem like the ones that matter to average community members around public safety, how long it takes to resolve a property crime or violent crime reduction, just real things, these, these, so, I made my point. I really would like us to evaluate the Sheriff's Department performance measures. I like the performance measures I see for the juvenile court. We talked about the, the Capitol facilities plan. We know we have issues at the jail with that very aging facility, more to come when the Capitol facilities plan comes to committee. And then that will move to the Committee of the Whole. It's going to go to the Community Development Committee. And then I just wanted to briefly have, wanted to see if there was any reactions to one of the, one of the decision make, decision packages on the fly, we heard from the Sheriff's Department this morning about the Axon body cam. Is there any member who didn't, was not interested in that item? That was not in a, in a decision package that came from the executive? It was something they learned about just a couple of weeks before. I, it sounded interesting to me, they, they seem to have made a compelling case about the use, but I'm interested in other, others' reactions. Councilor Hitchens, not sure if your light is up on that or something else, but go ahead.
I'll start with that. So interested, yes. I don't have a price tag, so it's a little hard to have a real conversation, at least I didn't see it.
There was a price tag in their presentation.
Was it?
It was about $150-ish thousand in year one and $500,000-ish in year two.
Probably in my notes, but yeah. So I, I am interested for a variety of different reasons. The taser portion of it is intriguing to me because this was one of my wonders with the original. It's like, we want them to draw a taser over a gun, but the only one we're getting footage for, if they remember. And again, the whole point is in the heat of the moment, we want them to be able to respond quickly and with the least level of threat, right? And so if they have to pause and think about which their button, what am I pulling, that takes that, that hesitation away from that interaction with whomever. If they don't have to stop and pause and make that initial thought, lessens the, the possibility of, of a mistake, which could end in somebody's life being lost. So I think that if you're talking about a price tag in a human life, I would say that it would be worth an investment. I think there's some other things with our, the sheer number of Amber Alerts and Silver Alerts that we get in our community and the MMIWP, which has a different alert name to it that I, for whatever reason, can never remember. Endangered persons alerts, thank you, that was it, that we really kind of raise the ability to get eyes in a lot of different places. And I know there's been a lot of conversation in public safety about buying these cameras and putting them out. We already have cameras on the front of the car. Instead of installing more cameras, just turning those into a system, I think makes a lot more sense.
Thank you for those reflections. Other thoughts? Was your light up for an additional reason?
It was, but I'll let other people chime in and then I did remember one of my wonders.
Vice Chair Campbell?
I, I fought for three years to get body cameras out there for our officers, so any expansion of it and more utility, I will absolutely be in favor of.
Thank you for that. Councilor Hitchens, back to you.
Thank you. My, my other thought goes back to, I actually looked at my notes, so that helps. For Sheriff's Department, and I did send this to them, in looking at the budget book, South Hill encompasses the South Hill precinct and the Parkland-Spanaway precincts or detachment. And I have a lot of community members in, in Parkland and Spanaway that want to know what we're doing there. And unlike our other precincts, I can't go to the budget book and say, this is how many FTE, this is how much, how many dollars. And they're a little frustrated with that. They don't like my answer that it's lumped into South Hill. So I really want to understand what we are investing in Parkland-Spanaway. We have a precinct, they have a training office, they've, they've got locked, secure places to lock up cars, we've got investments in that building, thought it needed a new roof, but maybe it doesn't. But the point is, I don't know how much we're spending there because it's not delineated from the other detachments. So just really want to understand that, so when people ask me, I'm able to articulate that.
Thank you for making that request. Well, I don't see any other lights up at this time. I'm just reviewing my notes too. Sorry, I was listening and not reviewing my notes. Okay. We don't, I believe that's all the hands we have now. Mr. Bookie, to remind us of what we have planned next week, please.
Thank you Chair Mill. The next meeting of the council is, for the Committee of the Whole, is Thursday, October 12th at 9:30 a.m. We'll have the Planning and Public Works Department, Ms. Jen Tottson, who's the director. And then the afternoon, on Thursday afternoon, the Prosecuting Attorney, Ms. Mary Robinett, Department of Assigned Counsel, Mr. Michael Calamura. And then the Sheriff's Department is due to come back after that for some period of time. So I, I think to make that time most productive, we need to get the questions into, to Mr. Bridges and, and I'll handle budget questions, but he'll handle the other more qualitative questions as soon as you can to him, besides the ones that you've already given him, given us today, so that the Sheriff's Department can come in ready to answer those questions rather than.
Yep.
You know, where they can end up deferring again.
Absolutely, yep. Let's, let's, I'm certain that Ms. Chapman and Mr. Bridges will work together to focus the Sheriff's Department on what it is we want to discuss next Thursday. Thank you for coordinating us and making sure our time is well spent. That is our, so our next Committee of the Whole is next Thursday, the 12th. Continue to encourage members to get their questions to Mr. Bridges on this kind of subject matter that is in his responsibility. Encourage to, encourage to have members talk to me about what we're going to put in our main amendment so that we can make sure that things start coming together and can balance. There's lots of moving parts, we need to make sure it balances. So we need to manage all those moving pieces together. So encourage members to speak with me. Mr. Bookie?
So I just want to make sure that the staff, you understand the staff members going forward. So Mr. Bridges also has planning and public wor, or excuse me, Mr. Bridges.
You almost gave him a heart attack.
Just added to his workload. Excuse me. Mr. Bridges, questions on the Prosecuting Attorney should go to Mr. Bridges as well as Assigned Counsel and any additional sheriff's ones. Planning and Public Works is Mr. Taylor, Mr. Swanson and Mr. Kruger. Mr. Kruger is the lead on the planning and land services side. So those two, there's a general fund component and then there's the, the special revenue fund component on that.
And the, and many of the, the improvement plans are starting to make their way through the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee or the Community Development Committee. So those are showing up on our consent agendas for scheduling in committees if they haven't already. So lots, lots in motion. Seeing no other business before the Committee of the Whole, we are adjourned.